City Council, if you want to come to order, the clerk will call the row.
Councilors, Kadeen, Deanna, Hilby?
Yeah.
Lalibidi?
Here.
Palatier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Camara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Is there someone who wants to speak? Do we have a citizen's input time for us? First to come before is Melissa Costa. Subject matter is library protest. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me? Okay. I made a really last-minute decision to come by. I know there's only really so much that can be done in this setting, but I think it's important, based on the aftermath of what I've kind of heard in local media and whatnot, the mayor's response to what happened at the library this weekend when NSC 131, a self-proclaimed white supremacist group, showed up to protest the story hour that was there. And there were about 25 of them masked, screaming slurs, mostly homophobic, but there were other people they targeted as well, especially a person attending who was wearing a yarmulke, which would, you know, obviously give them the signal that she is of Jewish faith, which they are against. So I just want to give you, this is a group I became aware of around January of this year. So I just want to quickly take the time using this platform to kind of do a public service announcement, because it's kind of been said that, oh, they came, but they're not from here. And I kind of wanted to spell this, because I've been on their tail for about a year now, just as a layperson, watching news, reading articles, what they post on social media. So I just want to use the limited amount of time to do a public service announcement, like I said, for community safety. We don't call NSC Nazis or white supremacists, because we have different political views. It's not about that. That is what they call themselves. Loudly, aggressively, everywhere that they can show it, they do. In the last year, yes, while a favorite target of them has been the drag story hours, they also have placed white supremacist flyers and stickers throughout mass nearby Rhode Island. There have been stories, you know, ABC Six, or The Globe, or The Providence Journal. It's been in Warren, it's been Providence, Pawtucket, Portsmouth. In East Providence, they actually stickered and flyered a private school. So a couple of them were arrested for trespassing and vandalism, and two other members of the group that were with them had to sign trespassing orders or something. I guess it was like a ticket. One of them was identified as a Fall River resident. I just want to make that clear. I have no idea where. I've tried to find out. I don't know where, but I just, this constant thing that it's others that come here to create things is dangerous. We need to have our eyes and ears open. There may be one, there might be 10. I don't know. But to try to kind of gloss over it and assume that these things don't happen everywhere, and these people don't get radicalized everywhere, is not a safe path, in my opinion. So I just want to go through the other appearances that I have seen in the past year, and then I will leave it alone.
Thirty seconds left.
Okay. So, anyway, again, first time I was introduced to them, at Brigham and Women's Hospital. They were out there with a huge banner against white genocide. They were handing out flyers that had the photos of two doctors there, that pilot a program that is working on certain diseases that affect certain minority communities more than they do Caucasian Americans, which they saw as anti-white. On March, at the St. Patrick's Parade in Boston, you saw them on the news, they took up a whole street with a banner that said, "Keep Boston..."
Can you wrap up, please? Your time is up.
This is, it's literally like five more points, that's it.
Go ahead.
It's important. Thank you. I appreciate it. I don't ever come to sit and sit.
That's my bad.
Okay, the St. Patrick's Day Parade. They had a banner all the way down, I want to say it was either Arlington or Charles Street, "Keep Boston Irish." In September, they actually posted pictures, training. They blacked out their faces, because they didn't have the masks on, but they were in a Fall River park. There were no defining, there was no defining trees or signs or anything in the background. Again, I tried to break it down, I zoomed in, but it was tagged as in Fall River. In October, they went up to the Kingston Hotel, where some immigrants that had been shipped, for lack of a better word, to Massachusetts had been put in temporarily, because they are also anti-immigrant. In November, the story hour at the library, about six of them showed up, and I believe now, based on what we saw on Saturday, it was a test run. And the last thing I just want to close with is, they have put out a couple of propaganda videos about Saturday, from their own point of view. And in a second one that they posted yesterday, just as the Pride Committee and the mayor's statement had dropped, that's why I have a feeling somebody was paying attention to see what the response was to what they did, they didn't even, they didn't necessarily zoom in on the people that, why they said they were there, which was a drag story hour. They zoomed in on that one member in attendance that had a yarmulke, and they compared, she said she looked like a rodent, basically, which is a Nazi point from World War II, is how they tried to dehumanize Jewish people, was to compare them to rats and mice and things like that. And they zoomed in on her face. And I will not share that publicly. I privately sent it to the Pride Committee, so they can look out for the safety of their members. I'm not on the Pride Committee, I'm just an ally, I'm a supporter. I have many friends, many kids I've worked with over the years, that are part of this community. So, again, I'm not, it's not to be negative, throw blame and whatnot, I just want us to be realists and to be safe going forward.
Thank you so much.
And not, you know, just kind of put a nice face on this. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to share the information that I've, like, literally, I take screenshots and throw them into an album, so I have something to go back to. It's nothing sophisticated, I don't have any inside knowledge. We're regular people that have become more concerned with every appearance by this group, whether it's Jamaica Plain Story Hour, Boston St. Patrick's Day Parade, a school in Providence, Jewish centers. I want to make the central grade...
We get it. Counselor three wants to say something?
No questions.
Brief comment, please.
If I were a comment.
Yeah.
Nope, just a comment, I'm sorry. This is an issue I think that is going around nationwide. I hope you share all the information that you shared with us, with the police department, I'm sure they're on it. It's not only a city issue, it's a state issue, the state police and the federal government. So hopefully our law enforcement people are on top of this, because we watch the news every single night, the local news, the state news, and the national news, and we see a lot of this hatred, our bearing propelled forward. So I appreciate our coverage for coming here, and I hope the administration and our law enforcement officials are on top of these type of things. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Item number two, we have a discussion, the loan order of Phase 22 lead service removal water systems improvements in the amount of $4,675,000. It was referred on November 22, 2022. Any questions on the loan order? You want to come down?
No.
Thank you very much, Counselors.
Want to give us a brief synopsis, please?
Yep. In front of you, you have a loan order in the amount of $4,675,000. This is for removal of lead services throughout the city. This money will be used in conjunction with a win grant that we, the city, has received, as well as a request for some Bristol County ARPA fund to go towards this project.
Counselor C2, Counselor Deanna?
So, this dollar amount plus the $3 million from the ARPA funding, and the $10 million grant, is the totality of it?
Uh, this...
Or how do the numbers all break down?
So, yeah, so this will not cover all of the work that needs to be done. The work that needs to be done, based on the current numbers that we have of lead services within the city, is a total of $23 million. That is what it has been estimated to remove all lead services throughout the city. So, the project tonight, as well as the $10 million, as well as the $10 million win grant, as well as the $3 million ARPA grant, will carry us through the next four years of this project. Through an ACO, we are required to move, remove in 2023, 400 lead services; 2024, 600 lead services; 25, 600 lead services; in '27, 400 lead services; and then 400 lead services every year thereafter, until they're all removed throughout the city.
So with these three pots of money, so to speak, we're looking at, we have $17,675,000, correct?
Yep.
So, there's still an additional $3 million that was put aside. We voted for $6 million to go to water and sewer.
Yes.
Would it be reasonable and make sense to take that $3 million, and basically you'd have almost the entire amount necessary?
That is something that the council potentially could do. I was looking at some sewer projects. I would have liked to spend $3 million on water, $3 million on sewer. We're waiting to determine a sewer-related project. We're waiting on some grants and some earmark funding to come in. We don't want to allocate that ARPA funding for something where we may be able to get other funding sources for. So we're just waiting on those to see what comes in. But, you know, so that's what I was doing, planning on doing with the $6 million that the council allocated towards water and sewer projects.
Yeah, I certainly would follow your lead, and whatever way you feel is best to, you know, use the funding is fine. At the last meeting, I asked what this bond represented in terms of the ratepayer, and you said it was a dollar and I think 38 cents? Am I close?
Yeah, so it's roughly, once the debt service comes on board in 2025, it's eight cents per CCF, and then based on the 53 CCF, give me one second here. So that's $4.24 per year added to the water rate of the average water user. And just one thing about this, so this is, majority of this project, $4.15 million, is applied for through SRF funding, the state revolving loan funding. The state revolving loan funding right now is the one avenue to access bipartisan infrastructure law funding. So essentially, we'll be taking a loan through the SRF program, and then they'll be giving a principal reduction of that loan, as they have in the past.
Right, so you've given a conservative number of ultimately bonding for, give or take, $3 million in the end result.
Correct.
And that represents the dollar and change per quarter for the ratepayer.
Correct.
Now, the reason I bring that up, so seven times that amount of money would be almost $10 a quarter, correct?
Roughly, thereabouts, yes.
But yet, when I proposed $20 million to be given to you for water and sewer, we were told it represented $2 a quarter for the ratepayer. So either somebody's calculator was broken, or it was misrepresented.
So I can tell you all my calculations that I do. I base it off of the average of 53 CCF per year. I would have to go back into my notes to see whether I did that on a 20-year, okay, yeah, again, yeah. You know, again, with my calculations, yeah.
I don't know if my microphone's working. I don't think it is. It's probably a good thing.
All right, just went up.
But anyway, so in hindsight, so $3 million represents a dollar and change, and $20 million only represented $2 savings for the ratepayer. There's a problem there. That really upset me, because the $20 million, you could have completely paid for this, and still for other projects that you need completed. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C4, Counselor Libby?
Thank you. I just have one question. You said it's $23 million total to remove all the lead service?
All the lead service from the current numbers that we have of our inventory.
And then, so all of these three things together is about $17 million? Will that take care of all the lead services that are going from the street into the home?
Yeah, so the program that we're putting forward, there will be no cost to the homeowner for anything. So there's roughly about 740 or so full-lead services, so that's from the main all the way into the meter. We'll be replacing all of those from the main all the way into the meter. Anywhere where there has been partial replacements done in the past, meaning from the main to the curb stop near the property line, the requirements in the past by the regulations was, if you remove that, that was considered a removed lead service. With the change in the regulations, with the revised lead-in copp rule, that is no longer the case. You have to remove the full-lead service. So we'll be going back to all the homes where we removed up to the curb stop, and we'll be removing from that curb stop all the way into the meter.
So that will come out of this $17 million? Every homeowner will be taken care of?
You know, again, from our current numbers, the total program would be $23 million, but all the $17 million will be going towards that, yes.
Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C6, Counselor Pearl?
With my colleague in seat number two and some of the questions that she had, administration, I'd like the administration to come down and give us their opinion on exactly how much is this costing. And if we're hearing one amount for residents and another amount, I'd like to get to the bottom of it. So if we could also have, I don't know if it's Bridget or Mr. Aitkins, I'd like to have her questions answered.
Whoever would like to answer that question, for Counsel Pearl, please do.
Sure. So before we get too deep into this, I certainly understand the counselor in seat two's concern. Had this been raised before the meeting, I could have taken a look at anything that might have been presented at that meeting several months ago, and come with some answers as to why there at least appears. And I don't, I'm not necessarily conceding that there is a discrepancy. I imagine, as I always do, and maybe I'm naive, the mayor always says that I act like I'm from West Virginia, which is too bad, because there's some really great people in West Virginia. But I think it's just, I always sort of expect the best and hope for the best. I imagine that if there is a seeming discrepancy, there's a good explanation for it. But I have to say that I'm not prepared to answer the question, because that conversation where the counselor proposed a $20 million expenditure, which, as I recall, was the entirety of the county ARPA money at that time, plus additional city ARPA money, that's the extent of what I recall from the conversation. I'd be glad to look into it, and see what numbers we presented at that time and where those came from, and give the council some answers as to why that number doesn't seem to jive with the number that Mr. Ferlin is presenting here today. But I will say that before we get into, you know, sort of a gotcha moment, which I don't think anybody wants, but that's, it could be what it turns into, I'm just not prepared to answer the question.
Point of admission, if I may?
Sure. I'll yield to my colleague in seat number two.
Counselor C2, Counselor Deanna?
So, the reason I specifically remember that it was $2 was there was such a big discussion on, and my colleague in seat eight made the statement, "My God, I thought this money was going to save far more money. This isn't going to save the money I believed it was going to save, and $2 a quarter is not significant enough for me to support this resolution." I'm paraphrasing, but I believe I'm close to what your statement was. And it was based on $2 a quarter.
I have no reason to doubt anything you're saying, counselor, respectfully. It's just that I need to do the research and know, and refresh my memory as to what was actually said. I'll take a look at the agendas, I'll take a look at the meeting, make sure that I remember everything that was talked about, and also where those numbers came from. Because as you know, you know, one of the things that is always a challenge when we start talking about ARPA money, especially with regard to an enterprise fund, is because it can't go to salaries. It can't go to a lot of those expenses that really do contribute to the cost to the taxpayer. It doesn't do everything we'd want it to do to bring those costs down. But at this point, like I said, I don't think anybody here is prepared to have a meaningful conversation about what was said at that meeting versus what's being presented now, but I'm absolutely glad to wade into it and get you as candid an answer as I can.
And trust me, this is not a gotcha moment, not at all. At the last meeting, when this was first proposed, I was going to bring this up, but I was shut down and said, "This wasn't the time to talk about it. It still had to be advertised, and it would come back to us." So you would have had far advance notice, had I been allowed to complete my line of questioning that evening, but I wasn't.
Well, I'm sorry you weren't, and I'm sorry I'm not prepared to answer.
And, you know, I'm very passionate about this.
Hold on, Counselor.
I've been trying very hard for a long time to help with sewer and water, to help the ratepayers, help the taxpayers. So this gets me very upset. So with that, I'll yield, and I will leave it alone. Thank you.
Yeah, let's just make one thing very clear. No one was shut down from speaking?
Yes, I was.
Okay, Counselor, just going to repeat what I'd said. No one was shut down from speaking. What you were told were that this matter was going to come before you in finance, where the appropriate people could come down here and answer any question that you have. So he's going to answer the question by finding out what happened that night. He doesn't have it before him now. If you wanted him to give you that information, you could have done what you could do anytime, is call the administration, say, "This is what I'd like you to bring down at the next meeting. This is the question I have. Just give me the discrepancy in why a month ago it was said, or two months ago it was said it was going to be $2, and now it's $10," or whatever the price would be. But no one's ever shut anyone down in this chamber. I certainly don't. What I said to you was simple, we're not going to have a discussion then, when it's going to get referred to finance, and everyone can be at the table, which is now, Counselor.
So if we're not going to have a discussion now, that's stopping the conversation?
No, we are having it now, Counselor.
All right, we don't need to argue. I don't want to argue.
Well, it wasn't on the agenda, Counselor, to have this for discussion. It was referred to finance, which now it's referred in finance, and we have the discussion of finance. That's all. It's very simple. There's no need to make a statement like that, that you were shut down. You would never shut down, Counselor. If you wanted to ask questions, it would be finance. Everyone else was going to get the finance agenda we're going to have right now, today. Now, the fact that he can't answer the question you have, he'll get that answer for you ASAP. How long will it take you to come back with that answer for Counselor C2?
I will try to do it this week.
Thank you. Counselor C6, you can continue.
Sure. Mr. Aitkins, if you could just get that information and send an email to all of us, so that we'll know. And I feel bad that you weren't given advance notice to have that information tonight, because I think it's a legitimate question.
It's an important question.
But I think that if that question had been asked, so that you'd have that information for today, sometimes we ask questions when we get to the council floor, but it's easier to call and say, "Hey, this is the concern I had. Can you get this information?" So when we discuss that, you know, you'll have the information. But I am concerned with some of the statements my colleague in seat number two made, so if you could provide us with that information, it would be helpful.
Certainly.
And, Mr. Ferlin, I did hear you on WSAR. I thought you did a great job of speaking clearly and explaining to the residents of Fall River where all the money was coming from to do this, and I'm happy to see that we're going right to the house, and not just to the property line and having the homeowner pay. That's a bit different. There are some questions that I want to get to you, that I've just gotten calls over the past few days, about water meters, but this is not the time to be discussing water meters. We're discussing this, so I'll bring my concern to you at a later date. If you hang around and there's a break, I can tell you what my concerns are.
Yep.
But with that, I yield. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C4, Counselor Washington?
So, if I remember correctly, yes, I do, I don't remember the dollar amount, but I do remember that statement. So, but I do, Mr. Ferlin, I think that, either that meeting or the meeting thereafter, you were also saying that that pay rate was going to be around that. So if there's a discrepancy now, what I would ask, that you and the administration kind of get together to find out what that was, because I think it was both of you that said that that pay rate was going to be around that $2 range. So I don't know what happened in that time. It is concerning, but if you could do that. And just, we can always call the administration, right, and with questions prior to hear. Am I correct about that?
Anytime, but I, and I'm always glad to get the call, but I also acknowledge that sometimes things come up in the middle of the meeting, and it's not the direction anyone thinks it's going to be in, and there are important questions that not only need to be answered here, but for the people that are watching. So I'm glad to look into this and try to get you, even if it's not a satisfactory answer, it'll be an answer. And it'll be an answer based upon me having had a chance to take a look at it, and, you know, even if I don't like what the answer is, it'll be the truth.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. I think it's just concerning for people at home and confusing that, the back and forth. So I think the better information that we can come here prepared, the better. And if you guys are on the same page, or not, we know before the meeting. So thank you. With that, I yield, Council President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions? Counselor C1, Counselor Kadeen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is my mic on?
I'm not sure.
I've got a green light. Oh, there we go. I've got more of a statement than, I guess, questions. So, one, I just want to go on record and preface that I support the project, and I guess this comments are not directed to the individuals at the table, because I know you're not part of this. However, two meetings ago, when we were talking about the first quarter update, one of the conversations that I had mentioned was Beaufort Street, Streetscapes, and the fact that we had bonded close to $2.3 million, even though there's authorization for $2.4 million. So I just want to go on record, number one, saying that I'm not going to support any further debt authorization as one counselor, until we get an analysis on the arbitrage regulations, and whether or not we're in violation of any of that. I know that one in particular.
I can talk about that, if you want to.
Okay. Yeah, if I can just explain, I know you folks understand it, for my colleagues who may not understand it. So there are, the arbitrage regulations are basically regulations surrounding borrowing for municipalities, and it, you know, like in the 1986, or in the 80s, somewhere along the lines, they came back out, the IRS came back out with regulations, saying that, you know, municipalities cannot borrow to make money, right? And then in that, the part of the regulations were, if you go out for construction, you have a spend-down requirement, and within the first six months, you need to spend down 10% of the debt that was borrowed. 12 months, 45%, and you have up to about three years to expend 100%. So my concern is, is that we have...
But if you could do that. And just, we can always call the administration, right, and with questions prior to here. Am I correct about that?
Anytime, but I, and I'm always glad to get the call, but I also acknowledge that sometimes things come up in the middle of the meeting and it's not the direction anyone thinks it's going to be in. And there are important questions that not only need to be answered here, but for the people that are watching. So I'm glad to look into this and try to get you, even if it's not a satisfactory answer, it'll be an answer. And it'll be an answer based upon me having had a chance to take a look at it. And, you know, even if I don't like what the answer is, it'll be the truth.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. I think it's just concerning for people at home and confusing that, the back and forth. So I think the better information that we can come here prepared, the better. And if you guys are on the same page or not, we know before the meeting. So thank you. With that, I yield, council president.
Thank you, councillor. Any further questions? Councillor Seaborn, councillor Cadine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is my mic on?
I'm not sure.
I've got a green light. Oh, there we go. I've got more of a statement than, I guess, questions. So, one, I just want to go on record and preface that I support the project. And I guess this comments are not directed to the individuals at the table because I know you're not part of this. However, two meetings ago when we were talking about the first quarter update, one of the conversations that I had mentioned was Beaufort Street, Streetscapes, and the fact that we had bonded close to $2.3 million, even though there was authorization for $2.4 million. So I just want to go on record, number one, saying that I'm not going to support any further debt authorization as one councillor until we get an analysis on the arbitrage regulations and whether or not we're in violation of any of that. I know that one in particular.
I can talk about that if you want to.
Yeah, if I can just explain, I know you folks understand it, for my colleagues who may not understand it. So there are, the arbitrage regulations are basically regulations surrounding borrowing for municipalities. And it, you know, like in the 1986 or in the 80s, somewhere along the lines, they came back out, the IRS came back out with regulations saying that, you know, municipalities cannot borrow to make money, right? And then in that, the part of the regulations were if you go out for construction, you have a spend down requirement. And within the first six months, you need to spend down 10% of the debt that was borrowed. 12 months, 45%, and you have up to about three years to expend 100%. So my concern is, is that we have some debt that was, at least short term, whether or not it was long term, and I'll go back to you in a little bit. But without cash flows being submitted in terms of the timeliness of needing to borrow and things of that nature. And we've got a project that potentially, according to the actuals that are before us, have only spent $104,000. So, you know, part of the violations for this, you know, the IRS could potentially request, require that any interest savings be paid to the IRS plus additional penalties since we are a tax exempt entity. So I just want to make sure with all the borrowing that we have out there, that our financial advisor just goes through it, that we have something.
I can, I'd like to talk to respond.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that was already a concern of mine several months ago. I've already been on top of that. We've been working with our bond council and with Hilltop Securities. I actually, because we're getting ready to go out to borrow for February, but as you know, all this process starts much sooner. So what it appears is that was a loan authorization back then, but they didn't actually take the borrowing out back on that date. So we are updating all of that. We now have, I mean, Mr. Ferlin does a really good job with his cash flows. Unfortunately, you know, there's been a lot of changeover in the city and Al Olivera is now on board. We had another meeting with him today. We're actually getting all of these projects together, doing a true cash flow. And I mean, I have regular meetings over the next two weeks with our bond advisors. So we are not in an arbitrage situation right now.
Okay, so they didn't contrary to what the report shows? Because the report was showing just under $2.3 million of short-term borrowing.
It's borrowed, but it wasn't borrowed that far back.
Oh, it wasn't. So you're saying that it's been borrowed, not spent, but it's within that three?
Yeah, so some of the issues is the carryover of that book. And as we're going over and we're changing, we're going to change some of that picture of the way those are on individual sheets and look at, and we're going to be providing more information where it looks like more of like a true cash flow of like, you know, projected term and how, when we actually need the money. So we are tightening that, all of that up right now.
So are you concerned moving forward that we still potentially could be in an arbitrage situation?
No, because the city didn't invest the money. It was sitting in money markets at the time. So we didn't earn any money. The interest rates were so low.
But you still have a spend down though, right?
We are spending down, yes. And so we've been looking at bond premiums and making, that's all been active conversations with bond council and with Hilltop to make sure that we are not in any.
So I wasn't expecting a full conversation because obviously I'm just bringing it up now. So I guess I'll take it offline, but I just want to, just moving forward until I get some confirmation from the administration that that's the case, just so you know that I'm not going to be supporting any further debt just moving forward. But so if we can rectify that tomorrow, then that's fine with me. And I appreciate it. And again, I know you just got here, so I know it's not your fault or, you know, Seth as well. But just concerned as a councillor, you know, when we go out there and just.
I was concerned as the CFO.
Internal controls and making sure that, you know, the debt that's authorized by the city council, obviously we're meeting, you know, federal regulations. That's where I was concerned with, so, without a yield.
Thank you, councillor. Any further questions? All right, thank you very much for coming down. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number three, a discussion regarding the overview of the City of Fall River and Bristol County American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding. And it's basically have the director come down and discuss to us what's going on with the ARPA funds.
Hi, everyone.
How are you?
I'm sorry, before we continue, number three, can I just have a referral?
Motion to refer to full counsel.
Second.
Motion to refer to full counsel made by councillor Repose, also by councillor Washington. On the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Now you may proceed.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you all. I know you probably missed me because I haven't been here in a while. So I wanted to give you an overview of.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I wanted to give you an overview of sort of, I know there was a few of you who have been asking where we stand with the Bristol County as well as the city ARPA funds. Just before we begin, just a couple things that I noticed that I want to clarify. In the letter I sent down on December 8th, I think it's one, two, three, five paragraphs down, I state the Bristol County Treasury overview. There's a discrepancy in both of those amounts by $50,000 because I adjusted, I adjusted the Bristol County ARPA funds overview chart I'm showing here on the fitness court. I had made a typo, and when I added the $50,000, which is the correct amount, I didn't change that amount on the letter that I already drafted. So I just wanted to point that out to you, as well as councillor Man Reposa pointed out to me, so thank you, that on the city ARPA funds overview, if you flip to page four, I have under the proposed projects, I put the capital improvements for information technology that you are actually hearing tonight as a proposal that we are seeking funds through the Bristol County. So there's that. And then I would just also note, when I drafted this chart, two contracts had not been signed that are signed now. Those are the nonprofit assistance program. That contract has been signed. And under the Bristol County overview, the Blue Water Project has also been signed. So just to start, I wanted to sort of go over the terminology that I'm using. So no contract signed means that the Bristol, that the advisory committee for the city money has been, or the Bristol, or that the city council themselves, sorry if it refers to the Bristol County Treasury money, has been, the committee has voted and approved, but no contract has been signed. And that can be for several reasons. Really, it's just that I haven't drafted it, that we're working on the specifics of it and getting it right, or that it's, sometimes it might be just sitting on my desk and just hasn't got walked down to the right person yet. In progress means that the contract has been signed with the subrecipient. It means that they are going through the procurement requirements by the federal and state. And also that, you know, some invoices may have been turned in and paid out. Some may still exist. Some may still be looking to be paid and not provided to us yet. So that would be in progress. And then completed is that the contract's signed, invoices have been provided, procurement has gone through, and that all funds have been distributed to the subrecipient. And it's done. The project's done. So I think, just to be prudent, it would probably make sense just to field questions.
I have to wait for the president.
Yeah.
Councillor, seat eight, councillor Washington. The others have their hands up as well.
I'd like you to just, you know, let's go through the list.
Councillor, I said councillor seat eight had a hand up before you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right. I'll yield and I'll talk after you can go.
Okay. I just. Was I next or was there someone else?
No, no, you're next.
Okay. Just to kind of go through them, like Riveter Recovery, they're really desperately in need of this money. When do you think that that will be released to them?
So what happened with that is that we received, we're receiving the opioid settlement money. And so the administration would like to use half of that, $70,000, to come from that and then $70,000 to come from the ARPA fund. So we've met with Mr. Doyle. We're going through the paperwork. The contract is going to be signed. We just had to make changes because of the change in where the money's coming from.
So instead of the $140 from ARPA, he'll get 70 and get 70 from the opioids?
Correct.
So the sooner we can give him the 70 to get him started, the better.
Yes. And so that's a contract that's sitting on my desk.
Okay. Hopefully that one will move. I know that they're hurting up there. The COVID health insurance, what exactly is that?
So that was just voted upon at our November meeting. And that is for third-party, so like it was payments that the city incurred from the self-insured Blue Cross Blue Shield in Massachusetts, so during COVID, for COVID-related. So that contract is not signed because I'm getting all of the paperwork from Blue Cross Blue Shield to be reflected in the contract.
So that was $602?
Yes.
Wow, that's a lot. And those that are completed. The other one is the Watupah Row Project of the $200,000. Are they caught up on payments for rent?
So no, what happened with that is that that building sits on, I believe it's some, I think it's state and federal property. Or is it state?
The Row Center is on city property.
It's on city property.
That is Water Department.
Because it's Water Department property and these are federal funds, in order for them to do some of the rehabilitation that they were talking about doing in that building, it actually would require all of the ADA compliance. It basically made the price astronomical because they were looking to put in a bathroom and a number of other things. I know your question, and I heard your question, I'm not avoiding it, as to whether or not they are caught up with their rent. I do believe that that's an ongoing negotiation as to whether or not there's a, what their future looks like in that facility. I can't comment on it. I'm not a part of it right now, but I know it's ongoing. If we do reach a satisfactory conclusion there, I think the big challenge to the rowing center is that the repairs that they wanted to make to that building are much, much more expensive than they anticipated because of the code requirements.
Okay. And, you know, I hear you say the word, "We're going to negotiate." That contract has been negotiated. There was a balloon payment. We're now going to negotiate the balloon payment again? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
I don't know the specifics. I just know that it's an ongoing conversation. I apologize. I can get that information for you.
I think they're a wonderful program, but I would really hope that students in Fall River at all of the high schools and the colleges, the nearby colleges, BCC, UMass Dartmouth, the nearby colleges utilize that because there are many opportunities for scholarships with the row program. So I'm not against it. But I think you don't give people more money when their bills aren't paid. You just, you don't do that, at least not in my world. And the rest of it, the other question I have, the holiday parade, it says $50,000. I thought we gave them 75.
So we gave them $75,000 for 2021. So if you flip to page two, you'll see the $75,000 reflected there. They spent, and I believe they spent $63,000. And so what you're looking at, I believe, is the 2022. And so we were using some of that balance of the $13,000 and then the 50. However, with the parade being canceled, I think they expended only $20,000.
So does that money come back? Or do they hold that money for next year?
I think that's what sort of we're discussing right now.
The other one was the strategic tourism plan of $670,000. I'd like to hear more about that.
So the strategic tourism plan, a lot of the amount that you see there goes towards the real, taking a real look at the data, doing a data analysis and understand, getting a company to come in and figure out where are people traveling from, who are these people? What are they, why are they coming to this city? Where are they spending their money? How are they spending their money? And really digging into that information in order to utilize and figure out what's going to work from a marketing and advertising standpoint.
So we're going to pay $670,000 on that?
No, no. So it's a two-year, it's a two-year program where we review it after the first six months. But that also encompasses a, an event, like almost an events coordinator that's working out of the city hall to help sort of streamline a lot of these processes.
Well, if it's an event coordinator that's working out of city hall, the subrecipient to the strategic tourism plan is One South Coast Foundation. So it's not out of the city of Fall River. And this whole council has adamantly, for years, stated that we want a tourism director. So I would, you know, urge the administration, he may not be in agreement. He and I can agree to disagree, but you're spending $670,000 to do whatever you're going to do with tourism, but we don't even have a tourism director, and we're going to let South Coast Foundation do it, which they do a good job, but there are other people in this community that do a lot for tourism and event planning, et cetera. I mean, Creative Arts Network has done things as well. Are they going to get part of this money or not? I think that, you know, you're going on a slippery slope here. And I would just encourage you, Mr. Aitken, to tell the mayor, we, as a council, have stated over and over, we want a tourism director. So I'm sure out of $670,000, you can get somebody to come in for two years and be a tourism director and see how that flushes out, how that works, and put that into our budget. The rest of it, I really don't have any questions on. I thank you very much, Attorney Ham. I know that you've done a great job doing this. I know the premium pay has been out. It says here in progress, but I believe the premium pay has already.
So we're just waiting, there's a couple negotiations with contracts, I believe, just a couple. But yeah, a majority has gone out.
But I think we're working in the right direction. And people that came in through COVID every single day certainly deserve their premium pay. And the sooner you could do that, the better, at least they would get that bump for the holiday season. Other than that, Mr. Aitken, again, tourism director, tourism director. We need to get people to come into Fall River. I'm so tired of hearing, "We are so located between the Cape and Newport and Providence and Boston, but you haven't figured out a way how to get these people to come here." So a tourism director does that kind of thing and comes up with programs. I mean, I've said it before, all the hotels around here, put a little video on there of the businesses that we have here, you know, the entertainment that we have here, things that Fall River has to offer. We live here and sometimes if it's on our nose, we don't see it. But we travel all over to look at, you know, South Carolina, to look at homes with, you know, with widow watchers. We've got the best ones here. You know, we've got the battleship. We've got the Iwo Jima monument. We have the Vietnam wall. We have a marine museum. We have Narrow Center for the Arts. Come on. We have things here to showcase. Tourism director. That's my final comment. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
I think we could just hire you, councillor.
Well, if I wasn't a councillor, maybe that would be a good fit for me because, don't forget, this weekend, last Saturday, I went to Wonderland. So come by.
We do have a lot of wonderful attractions. Councillor Seaborn, councillor Washington.
Thank you, council president. Attorney Ham, I am so happy to see you because you can shed some light on the many calls that I'm getting. Now, I know that we have spoken, but I don't explain it as eloquently as you. Maybe if they talked to my councillor in seat one, he could probably explain it in your terms, but I cannot. So I do my best to explain why it's taking so long, the holdup and the process that, this is a new process. So it was passed unanimously, the youth project, so many families are contacting me weekly. The business is weekly. We want to help these young people. It was such a moving thing and people were just ready to jump right in. I know I was. But the process is taking a long time. And so I think just explaining to the community a little bit why that's taking a long time in the right way to explain it would be very helpful to the community to understand it's not forgotten. It's there, but the process is long because it's a new process. So could you please?
Absolutely. And thank you actually for reminding me because it was, there was a big bullet here that I was supposed to talk about that. I overlooked it. I should have highlighted it. So one thing that was on my letter was to sort of give some sort of notice as to what is happening with the For Youth Initiative and to also sort of ask the council that at the next meeting, I would like to submit a letter asking to rescind the grant agreement for the For Youth Initiative to give back the $2 million to Bristol County. The reason for that is, and I think you said it quite well, it has been a very cumbersome process with Bristol County Treasury. And administratively, trying to administer a program where it's not just one subrecipient, but a ton of stakeholders, these vendors that will be the gyms and the music places and the nonprofits and all of that. It's very cumbersome to try to do the paperwork and manage those invoices through Bristol County Treasury. And so to streamline the process and make it much more, so I think, efficient, my recommendation would be to use the city money for that and to give you back the $2 million to be used for something else. I, you know, I can give more detail if you want, but I, so my sort of projection on this is that if, at the December 27th meeting, I won't be here, but, and I don't know if you will be, but I can prepare something to ask the council to rescind that grant agreement if that is something you would support. And then I would present it to, during our January advisory committee meeting, and ask for them to approve that $2 million. We have all of the paperwork and forms ready to go. We would do a press conference to really let people know that this is happening. We already have talked to people to try to, you know, get the word out to some of these organizations and businesses and vendors and businesses to participate in this program.
So I just want to, people are going to be very worried that we're asking to rescind the money and the money. So the administration is proposing to take it out of his, because it will speed.
it will speed up the process because this is, this is new to the Bristol County Opera people. This is, it's cumbersome, and people want to get this moving and want to help these young people, which my colleague in seat two should be thrilled. There'll be two more. It's all back in the thing for, so.
And I think Seth said it very well in a meeting the other day, and I'm going to quote you, is that, you know, the money really is, every, all the money is the city money, right? I mean, it's all of our, the city of Fall River's money. And so looking at it that way, it's just from an administrative standpoint, it's, it's going to be much less cumbersome to go back and forth with Bristol County on this.
So I would go on the record in saying that I would definitely do that, rescind that and support that in my vote, if that's going to make it quicker, as long as we get a guarantee that that 2 million will come from the mayor's side, the other side. I don't care where the money comes from. It's just that it happens and it happens soon. There are just so many young people out there that need this and need the support.
Just so you know, Counselor Washington, sorry to interrupt, but I, you know, in my meeting with Bristol County Treasury on this and like voicing my concerns about their process, I mean, Jane Gonzalez did go on and on about how wonderful this was, and she didn't really want to give it up, but she understood sort of where I was coming from in sort of the administration of this. But I did, she, she did commend this, this whole idea and thought it was a wonderful idea.
Yeah. So I want to state that, that this, it's not, it wasn't done wrong. It's not something, it's just, it's a very cumbersome process. And to look at it, we're looking at maybe in eight months or a year before we can get this off the ground, in my eyes. And then I just want to get it moving. So wherever the money comes from, but I wanted people at home to hear that from the administration and from you, Ms. Ham, as the attorney that oversees this, that it's just, you know, people are saying, "Well, you, you said you were going to do this great thing. These kids need it. Is it really going to happen?" And it is. It just may come in a different wrapped package from the city. So with that, I yield. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman C. Five, Councilwoman Pelletier. Did you have your hand up? Councilman C. Four, Councilwoman LeBeau.
Thank you. Just jumping off what Councilman C. Eight said, will that program take eight months to a year to roll out?
I thought that was, I mean.
No, I, that's like my take on it. It was so.
Oh, I think, oh, I think, no. I think we're in a, I think we're closer to that. Like all of the forms that the vendors will receive, I've created, I've created the forms for the families to fill out. We've spoken with somebody to sort of, they're ready to hit the ground running and sort of soliciting the, getting the word out to these vendors, doing the invoicing. I do think, I mean, I think that, my hope would be that, I think it's the third week of January is our committee meeting, assuming that you all are in favor of rescinding that, presenting it to our committee. I did mention it at our last meeting as something we were looking at for support. And then I, I think a press conference would be, but I have had people also reaching out to me and they're ready to go. So I do think it's, I think it's less than eight months.
Well, if we have the money, we could like execute it really soon. We just need the money.
And that's the thing is, once it, once our committee creates votes on it internally within the city, then, I mean, I can draft that, I can draft the contract within days. The money gets moved into that fund. And the other advantage is, is that if for some reason this two-year program, we don't use all of that money, right, it can go back into the money to be used for something else.
So that was my other question. But just backing up a second, so it sounds like you already have all the documents ready for the vendors and the families and all of that. So once, if the other committee approves it, which I would hope that they would, and you have a press conference, then we're ready to go. So.
Yeah, I, yeah. And I, I think we were all hoping we would, the process, I mean, the application has been in since whenever you voted on it last, which I, I don't know if that was September 13th or even back in August.
I think it was before that.
Yeah, I think it was too. Yeah, I think it might have been the August 16th meeting. So I mean, all of this stuff has sort of just been ready to go, and we've been waiting for Bristol County Treasury.
And so the other question I had is, if it is getting towards the deadline and the funds aren't used, we can reallocate it to something else?
So yeah, so I mean, we can make, we can do an amendment. So for instance, the Small Business Grant Assistance Program you see on page two, that originally was the, voted by the Advisory Committee and approved for, I believe it was like almost 3.2 million. And we made, once we realized that there was sort of a standstill in the businesses that were seeking those funds, we made an amendment to reduce it by 2 million to the one, the 1.166. And that number might go down again. You know, we'll revisit that, and we can make an amendment. And then the month, the funds would then shift back into the sort of general ARPA account to be allocated to a different project.
Okay. And on that one, on the small business grant, I know that there was, part of the funds were going towards advertising and letting the businesses know, but is there any other direct outreach to the small businesses? Because what I'm hearing is, oh, it, you know, oh, I didn't know that was happening, or I thought that was done, you know, more towards the beginning of COVID. There was money for small businesses. They didn't know that this was another thing with ARPA funds from the city. So.
So one, I'm sorry.
Nope. So are there, is there an outreach to them to let them know?
So I, I mean, Ken Fiala is in charge of this. I'm not sure if there was anything else he's been doing, but I know we've also talked about, we're creating this new municipal website and linking that, those kinds of things. Like I'm hoping, I'm working right now on like the nonprofit assistance program, having that sort of identified on the ARPA page so that people can, and then maybe having the small business assistance program under that, so people can get all of that information in one spot.
Okay. And on the website one, was my other question, do we know when that is going to be up and running?
So the process we've been going through for the last probably month and a half has been going back and forth with the website developer around kind of big picture layout structure. I think we are, and I had a conversation with Council Repose about this, I think we're weeks away from convening the website advisory committee, which is comprised of members of the community, city councils, community groups, folks in, in government center, to try to start dealing with the, the fine points. In addition to that, the logo contest just finished up. We'll be announcing a winner soon, so we'll have a visual identity that's going to be going with this. And then we're in the process of interviewing software companies that will do some of the back of the house stuff. So one of the things that's critically important to this website is that people are able to schedule things, apply for things online, to include permits, to include licenses, to include all the different things that right now require a visit to government center. And if somebody can do everything you need to do in the center, in the city without coming to government center, that is, that's accessibility. That's inclusive. And so that's, that requires technology at the back of the house. We have done Zoom meetings with several cities that use different technology packages to do that. I was actually in a Zoom meeting with a company that actually does the actual permitting piece. We have another one scheduled for next week. So that's what's been happening, which means that I think we are, it's probably early January when we start to convene the meeting, and then March, when we are able to, to launch, I would say, a 90% website. And then it will take a few months after that to get all the rest of the pieces in place. But a website that is going to have a tremendous amount of more functionality and better usability than what we have now is a few months away.
Okay. Can't come soon enough. The website is atrocious. So then the other, only other question I have is the 1,034 for IT, that would be deducted from the funds available on the Bristol County, but then possibly there'd be 2 million put back in.
Exactly.
Okay. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Councilman C. Seven, Councilwoman Repose.
Two questions, Attorney Ham. First is, is the hydrangea project there, Creative Arts Network, what is the status on that?
So the status is that, that, the amount that the committee voted for, the 25,000, was not necessarily the entirety of what the Creative Arts Network wanted. And so that contract was not signed because more money was desired. And so I've been working with the Creative Arts Network in conjunction with Chris Perano to find another area that we think we have an agreement on, like an agreement between both parties to possibly, where they have similar interests and to, so, so, so we have to present that back in front of, I guess, the committee to figure out if that's something that can be supported through ARPA.
So do we, do we believe that number's going to change?
I think, so, I, I guess, unclear, because I'm not sure if the project would be funded through ARPA or wouldn't. I think it could change, and I, but I think it could be a much more encompassing project for the city.
It's a possibility the project itself could change.
Right. I guess that's what, yes.
Morph into something different.
Exactly. Yeah, it's more beneficial for, like, for the city, for everyone, as opposed to just one sub-recipient.
Fair enough. The other question, I asked you this yesterday, but for my colleagues, the question I asked you was, as far as a, it's a project that remains no contract signed, what is your process to facilitate if it kind of just sits there for two, three, six months? What are you doing behind the scenes to get that rolling?
So what I'm doing is reaching out to those sub- recipients of creating, they're required when they sign the contract to provide monthly updates as to the status of the project. And so I'm sort of revisiting those projects that you see no contract signed. That was what you said, right? You asked, okay. I was thinking if you, sorry. Yes. So yeah, so we're revisiting with some of those. But a lot of them are still sort of, we're like, we're having meetings, we're talking about it, they're in the works. So I've been in contact with those people.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Councilman C. Two, Councilwoman Deon.
My first question after listening to the Youth Initiative, is it possible for us to refer this to full council and take a vote tonight to rescind that money and?
I would love that.
So for expediency? Is that something that we can do? Where we were all, whether it was a unanimous vote, we could make a motion even to, I just lost my mind, to reconsider? Or make a motion to rescind it and not have to wait the two weeks?
So we haven't had anything presented to us yet. So it wouldn't be appropriate to make a motion to rescind the money. Councilor, take it apart itself to rescind money without coming from the administration? We'd rather have it come from the administration, put it on the agenda, do it the right way, and then we can all vote on it.
Point of clarification. There might be some issues in terms of the people.
Councilor, Councilor can correct me, but there's a process here where we can, we vote to confirm what the administration allocates, and, and also the Bristol County Commissioners might have to say, have a say in this as well. Maybe I'm wrong.
No. So I had a meeting with Bristol County Treasury about this application and explained to them that I, that my reservations with moving forward with this, with this application. One thing, like, for, for instance, I create, they wanted to see sort of every vendor that was going to be part of this and the amount of scholarships that were going to be allocated to each child and the amount of cost. And so I sort of did like a template to kind of, but what I explained to them is, you're asking for me to provide you with information that we can't solicit until we have the approval, right? So like, we're, we're not going to solicit all of these vendors until you've told us. So it's kind of this catch 22, and which they agreed with as well. And so I just asked them, they asked me what they should do, and I said, "Why don't we just put this on hold and I'll report back after I've spoken to the city council?" And so what, there's been no money transferred. So at any point in the, there's three levels of review, as I've mentioned before. And right now, I think this is sitting in level three. And so they're, so they're like, they want to approve it, but for this, it might actually be level two, I'm sorry. But they want information I can't provide them. And so that's where like the sort of cumbersome back and forth. So I'm, so I just said, "Hold off on it. Let me talk to city council, see if they would support rescinding." So what the request would be that I would bring at the next meeting is to rescind the grant agreement that was signed pertaining to this project. There has been no transfer of actual funds or anything like that that has to be returned to Bristol County or move out of our, you know, ARPA account.
Councilman C., Councilman C. Two has the floor.
So basically, it was just a plain, simple question. For expediency purposes and because people are so anxious to get this online, it was just a simple question. Is it something we can deal with and handle tonight? If we can't, that's fine. But if we could, it would be a wonderful thing.
According to the clerk, the answer is no.
Okay. I tried.
Thank you.
I think you were hoping so too.
I was too. It would be, saved me a lot of paperwork.
So then my only other question is, the nonprofit assistance program for a million dollars?
Yes. Can you, yeah, do you have more questions? I mean, I don't want to cut you off. So, so the nonprofits this entire time have been able to apply and have fun, you know, have funding through the city. It's, I believe it's been on our website for almost two years now. And we've had a lot, as you can see, I tried to break this down to show under assist, there's, so there's assistance to nonprofits, but a lot of the projects under negative economic impact are nonprofits that applied. And as we're approaching December 31st of 2024, like we have a year, and we're starting to sort of hone in on projects that the city and administration really wants to do. We didn't want to cut off nonprofits, but we also want to sort of try to help more, but at a lower rate. So the, so, but still, and still give them opportunities, because I think that there's still a lot of, we're starting to see a lot of nonprofits coming back that have already received money, and we want to really see some new nonprofits that haven't been able to, you know, be helped through this ARPA funds. So the idea was to create this nonprofit assistance program where, you know, we can do like a maximum of 50,000 to help nonprofits that may have had, had revenue loss during COVID.
Yeah, because it was much, much more difficult to raise money and et cetera. So.
And just, and just also, so you know, the process for people listening at home would still be the same. So the application that's online would still be the one that they would fill out. It would still come to me. I would still review it with the administration. And then the committee, which you sit on, would still get the same vote as they would have previously. It would just be for a limited amount of money.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions?
Creative thought, Counsel.
There is no, this was for discussion purposes only. There's nothing before this. It's just a discussion only purposes. That's why we can't take any action on anything tonight. It's for discussion purposes only, just to inform the public of what's going on with the ARPA funds. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn finance as made by Council Repose, second by Council Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The City Council Finance Committee is adjourned. Regular City Council meeting will begin in five minutes. Ask me to come to order. Clerk will call the robe.
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Deon?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Valibity?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Carrera?
Here.
Repose?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Anyone please rise from, to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a moment to sign the prayer, please. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the reappointment of Jason Burns to the Housing Authority.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve is made by Councilman C. Two, Councilwoman Deon, second by Councilman C. Seven, Council Repose. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item two is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Ricky Sahadi to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve made by Councilman C. Seven, Council Repose, second by Councilman C. Eight, Councilwoman Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three is a communication from the mayor in a confirmatory order of taking for bicentennial park.
Motion would be to accept the communication, place and file and adopt the order.
Motion made. Second.
Motion had been made.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item four is a communication from the mayor in a proposal for the Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of 1,034,604 for capital improvements for the Department of Information Technology.
Is there a motion? Motion would be to accept the communication, place and file and approve the proposal. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Motion accept, place on file.
And approve the proposal?
Yeah.
That's a motion, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Second on the motion, on the motion, Councilor C two, Councilor Deion?
Yeah, my only um objection to this is unfortunately, when the budget was sent down, all capital improvement projects were removed from the budget. It's fair to anticipate that IT will need upgrades and will need um capital improvements on an annual basis. Um, I get that people say that ARPA funding and Bristol County ARPA funding, it's all city money. Um, my issue is because it should have been in the budget A, and the difference between the two pots of money are, we have, we had sixteen million dollars to weigh in on, and the other pot of money was seventy million dollars that we had no um purview. My personal opinion is that this money, because capital improvement plans were taken out of the budget, that this should be paid for with the city ARPA funding, not the Bristol County ARPA funding. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, councilor, Councilor C seven, you want to speak?
Yeah, if I could, please, uh, I don't, I don't disagree with the actual project itself. I guess my only concern now is the timing of this. So this is a question to the administration as far as if we go through the Bristol County method, A, how long is it going to take for this to typically get approved? And then B, what is the game plan as far as getting these, this done? Because, I mean, I I read this, this is my wheelhouse completely, and I read a lot of this, and this is critical things that need to be done. The question is, how long is it going to take to be done? Is my concern.
Soon as we vote on it, soon it'll get done, I'm sure. But one minute, have them come down if you like, council, if you want to waive the rules real briefly?
I would like to make a motion to waive the rules.
Second.
Absolutely.
Motion waive rules has been made by Council Repose and second by Council Deion, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we just get a brief explanation to these two matters, please? As to how long it'll take?
This really is first time, so coming here some more support.
It's a pleasure to see you, we'll take it easy on them.
The questions, can you repeat them, Council Repose, please, very simple, two simple questions.
I always like to keep it simple, President Kamara. Um, I'm just curious, as far as your timeline of implementation, how long do you think this is going to take once funded or approved?
Uh, so a lot of these projects are spanned across different areas, like door access, the multi-factor authentication server upgrades. Some of these can happen within a month's time. Some of these projects specifically for the door access, uh, those could take typically a month just to really figure out what exactly we need, get quotes from vendors. Uh, implementation could take two months, three months, I'm not exactly sure the timeframe on that. Uh, a lot of that was really just contingent on whether this gets approved or not.
Okay, and as, so as far as these numbers you've presented to us, you've already gotten quotes and ideas of roughly what these numbers would look like based on current prices?
Yeah, so a lot of the quotes for servers, MFA, those are quotes that were given to me from vendors. Um, the door access was more a general estimate from few quotes that I've researched online.
Okay, so as the director of IT, how critical are these are these improvements?
Uh, a lot of these are really critical, uh, specifically the uh MFA, I would say, is the most important. Um, a lot of the network upgrades, I would say, aren't necessarily critical, uh, but they would improve a lot of the just efficiency across the city. Uh, to me, they are very critical.
Okay.
A lot of, a lot of the security systems that I do want to implement um can't be added with the current infrastructure. Uh, the current infrastructure is being a little bit strained as they are dated servers. Um, the processes in them are from twenty fourteen, I believe, in computer years, that's.
Forever.
That is a lot of time. Um, so I'm really limited in my ability to add additional security measures to the city without these upgrades.
Okay, and I would assume that this kind of plays into a bigger plan as far as the major capital improvements down the road that IT kind of needs to go through within City Hall and the system itself.
Correct, like I said, a lot of these systems are already dated as they are. Uh, a lot of the budget right now sort of phases them to service this year, to service next year. With this, it would be all encompassing, getting whole new infrastructure would set us on a better path to steadily upgrade systems going forward.
Fair. My other question is to Attorney Humm, as far as going forward with this, the approval timeline is my concern now. And I know we had this discussion yesterday, city versus Bristol County and all that, but I guess my question is now, if we go the Bristol County ARPA method, how long is it going to take before he can get what he needs to get done?
So what I have learned through the process is how to do a much better application to make sure that I include everything that they need from the get-go. Not this sort of piecemeal, like, oh, can you send me this, can you send me this? So that has helped. Um, I would say that that first batch that took a long time, it was, we submitted, I think it was seven. Um, and there were sixteen others from other municipalities at the same time. And so in asking those same questions to Bristol County Treasury, myself, um, I mean, they, it seems to be moving along. I've also, um, they may be removing one of the levels of review as well. Um, that was a discussion um that this level two was unnecessary. And so I'm thinking that also that could speed up the process. But I do think I've gotten better at creating these applications, knowing what they want and what they need. Um, and I also think that in talking to them that about their process, I think they've sped it up and they're not, um, I don't, I don't think they're being inundated as much as they were in that first batch for some reason in August.
Okay, so best case scenario?
Um, I, I had a couple um that went through within a couple weeks. So I I I would say a month. Um, so if I, if this was approved, I don't know that it is voted on tonight or how that works, but um assuming, say, that the next meeting it was approved, I mean, that contract would be, I'm not a contract, I'm sorry, the application would be submitted within days, um, and I I would say probably by February.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that?
It's fine with me.
I yield, thank you.
Thank you, councilor, could you please, this is your first time here, could you please just state your name for the record?
It's me, my name is Tyler Anteia.
Thank you, Mr. Anteia. Councilor C one, Councilor Kadeem?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, my main question was was asked by um Councilor in seat seven. But I guess just in terms of what is being put forth, I mean, from a risk management standpoint and our insurance um for cyber attacks, things like that, I'm I'm sure that's going to help reduce some of the uh the cost there. But your overall, you know, Councilor in seat seven was asking the question um in terms of the bigger picture, right, so the strategic planning, how much are we looking at for, you know, maybe a five or ten year um str- uh capital improvement plan uh in terms of upgrades for all our IT stuff? Do you have a rough dollar amount as to what we're looking at?
So we do have like a number of physical servers, that's what uh I'm really proposing in these uh ARPA funds. Typically, a a good baseline server would cost about fifty thousand. Um, really, that's bare bones, bare minimum, I would obviously like a more higher end if possible. But to get by fifty thousand per server, we have about, I believe, twelve physical servers. Uh, replacing two, like I said, every, every year as a five-year plan, two this year, two next year, uh, is usually how they were uh structured before, and that's how I would move forward.
And so the network upgrades, is that, is that server upgrades, is that what that?
Uh, it includes server upgrades, switch upgrades, and storage.
So you got switches, okay.
And firewalls.
Okay, all right. Uh, with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor C two, Councilor Deion?
Yeah, basically, I was going to ask which process would be the quicker one? Because again, if if it's critical and it's time sensitive, which is, again, I guess we always say the path of least resistance.
So I mean, I think that the, I mean, I think the city committee can be quick. I mean, but I feel like in this one, our next meeting isn't until January anyways. And so I actually think in this situation, this one would be because if it's approved in the December twenty-seventh meeting, um, I mean, we're talking like a few week difference, like a couple of week difference, I think. And um I was like, I had another thought and I just lost, um, oh my gosh.
Sorry, this one.
So let me ask one more question then. So I know in the past, there have been times where you've requested electronic votes for expediency purposes. Is that something that could be done with this, that we could actually vote before the next city council meeting and get it online?
We could, um, the amount is a lot, right? It's more than I normally do for an electronic vote, but that is something um that I certainly could do. Um, yeah, I mean, I think that the only one thing would be that before I um I asked um whether something can be sent down here, I do take um a sort of get a, get an understanding of from the person, um, how, you know, what what is our timeline? Um, so this timeline did work when I spoke with Tyler um last week. But I mean, whatever the city council decides, I mean, it it can go either way.
Okay, thank you, with that I yield.
Thank you. Councilor C seven, Council Repose?
Mr. Anteia, I'm just curious, as far as your department is concerned, are are we still subcontracting with somebody else to support your department? Are you completely running it a hundred percent now?
Correct, we do use a managed service provider to do some IT work for us.
And is that still in play or is that being phased out in the long term?
It is still in play right now.
Okay.
Uh, it usually is not ideal to phase out an MSP with the amount of work that they do behind the scenes. Uh, a lot of the in-house work, we have our IT staff too, but a lot of the backup maintenance, um, hardware upgrades and software upgrades, operating system upgrades, usually handling those off to a managed service, uh, managed service provider that has the tools and software to support that is typically a a better decision.
Maybe I should re-clarify, the gentleman who was essentially doing your job before you came on, is he still with us? Do we know? Uh, that may be a question of Seth. I don't recall the gentleman's name, Seth, but I'm referring to the gentleman who was kind of the interim running IT until we had a permanent director.
So the person, the person you're referring to is Mr. Diaz, Brian Diaz?
Yes.
So um there was a, an agreement that we had with MTSI for Mr. Diaz to um step in uh as a temporary uh part-time um CIO, and he did that. Um, that work is done, uh, he is now um stepped back to uh do the work of of any of the consultants uh that we do. Uh, I will say, uh, it's in, I think it's pretty important to note in support of what Tyler just said about the the wisdom of having a managed service provider as part of your work, uh, is that the cities and towns that tend to maybe get hit with with ransomware, a lot of times do everything in-house. Um, and it's it's kind of, you know, it's why I didn't like being a solo practitioner, because the only ideas I ever heard were my own, where when you're with a firm and you talk to other, it's the same idea. When you're you're using an MSP and they're talking about state-of-the-art stuff, your security is better. Uh, and they do a lot of that, sort of, the upgrade piece is an integral part of our security, that's why we still do work with them.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't disagree with that statement, I completely a hundred percent agree with that.
But there is no shadow CIO.
No, I, well, I was just curious, I know that was kind of in transition, I wasn't sure if they were still kind of working with Mr. Anteia as far as getting everything where it needs to be. That was my my point. Um, and then lastly, just as far as when this all gets implemented, are we having some subcontracting happening to do some of this upgrade? Are you, are you doing a majority of this?
Uh, so part of the the funds that I'm requesting does include contracted work. It doesn't have to include our current managed service provider, we can contract those out to other vendors if necessary. Um, but it is part of the funding too.
Excellent, thank you, sir, I yield.
Thank you, councilor. There being no further questions, thank you for coming down to the table, please, thank you. Good job for your first time. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five is a communication from the mayor and city councilor Michelle Deion's proposal for the Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of fifty-six thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-nine cents for the purchase of speed alert radar message signs and trailer equipment.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve, place on file, um, motion accept the communication, place on file and approve the proposal has been made and seconded. In discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six is the mayor's communication in the allocation of Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of three million dollars to the Department of Community Utilities Water Division for lead service removal.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Second.
Motion accept the communication and place on file and order ARPA directive for the drafting of the proposal has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven is a communication from the mayor in orders to accept grants, the first in the amount of two million dollars to fund a portion of Route seventy-nine DeVault Street corridor improvements project. And the second is in the amount of ten million dollars um for, to replace public and private lead pipes.
Motion so made.
Motion would be to accept the communication, place on file and adopt the orders.
Motion so made.
Motion has been made, they're seconded, they're seconded, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight is a communication from the mayor in a letter to Robert Beatty, the executive director of the Atlantis Charter School regarding public safety concerns in the area of Jefferson and Dickinson Streets and the limited use of Dickinson Street entrance at the school.
Is there a motion? We'll have discussion as soon as there's a motion and a second.
Motion to refer to public safety?
Motion, what was that?
Refer to public safety.
Motion to refer to community of public safety has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion to refer to public safety has been made and seconded, and a motion, Councilor C one, Councilor Kadeem?
Thank you, I did, I did receive a call, I'm sure my colleagues have as well, from uh the executive director. And while I support, you know, the um concern that, you know, the police department and potentially the fire department have had, has had with the uh the gates being closed, I just wanted to refer this to to public safety because I think there are neighbors in the um around the the uh neighborhood there that have concerns also with the number of traffic, um sidewalks not being there. So I think we need to really kind of talk about the totality of the safety concerns and and having those discussions in the Public Safety Committee would would help benefit and allow some of the residents to get there and and hopefully maybe potentially identify ways to address some of, or at least ease some of the concerns that they have. I know we're not going to alleviate um all the concerns that the the residents have in that that neighborhood, but um if we can find the middle ground between the school and uh the neighborhood, I think that would be beneficial, so. With that, I yield.
There you go, Councilor, Councilor C six, Council Repose, you had your hand up before?
No, I mean, I have, as my colleague in seat number one has. We've received, I've received several calls from people on both the Dickinson Street side as well as the Jefferson Street side. And people are feeling we were given a commitment when the school was built, and now people going back on the commitment. And I think that this warrants going to public safety and having the chief of police there, spectrum lighting also, the little um industrial pockets there, people cutting through, that there, there's been some issues, like they get warrants, public safety intervention.
I agree, are you a councilor?
I yield, thank you.
Councilor C five, Councilor Pelletier?
Yeah, you know, it's been a problem ever since the school has been up there. And uh we've been getting a lot of calls, uh, trying to address the situation down there. And it, you go by there, when school is letting out, it's like a zoo. I mean, cars all over the place, Stafford Road, uh, traffic and and they're going to try to do something to square this away. So uh to have a meeting and try to square it away, all well and good, but I wish them a lot of luck. There's a lot of kids, a lot of parents go pick up their kids, so, you know, is it going to change? I don't know, but at least we're trying to rectify the situation. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor C four, Council Liberty?
Thank you, when this was before us, um, prior, in the last administration, it was something that the council had voted on. And then I think it came before us one other time, um, with complaints from both sides. In reading the the letter to the school, um, it states that beginning on November twenty-eighth, the city's not going to raise any objections, so I'm assuming that Atlantis is already using Dickinson Street. Um, but my other question is, and I'm fine with sending it to public safety, um, it just says sincerely, the city of Fall River. Madam clerk, do we know who wrote this letter? Or what department it came from?
I don't, it was included in the package from the mayor's office, to my knowledge.
If we could um get that information as well, um, what person um wrote the letter from the city of Fall River? With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor C three, Council Kevi?
Yes, uh, maybe Colleen, I just took over that committee, maybe Colleen can clarify for me the pending list. This issue is already in the committee, correct? Well, I I welcome, we can handle two at at a future meeting, but the, I'm pretty sure looking over the list last time around, this issue is still pending as an item in public safety. Okay, I stand corrected?
It is, ma'am.
I welcome it, thank you, Mr. President.
You, councilor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there being no further questions? There being no further questions, all Councilor seat seven, Councilor Prozo.
Yeah, I know the letter states that it was gonna start on, on November twenty-eighth, so do we have an update of how, how it's gone for the past two weeks?
Not good. I'm good.
We'll find out shortly in minutes.
Seth, do you have any sense of it's improved at all?
No.
Motion to waive the rules?
Motion to waive rules has been made by Councilor seat seven, second by Councilor Dion, all in favor?
Aye. And, and, fair enough, sir. Welcome back.
It's good to be here. So, um, I am in, uh, I wrote the letter, by the way. Um, and, uh, we, um, had a lot of conversations about, um, you know, given the number of letters that we received from different constituents and, uh, stakeholders in this. There was a lot of conversation as to who the letter should come from and whether it should go to every resident or, or whether it should go to the school and it is, it's a difficult situation, because there's folks on both sides that, that are looking for relief. Since November twenty-eighth, um, I have been in conversation with Mr. Beatty, uh, just about every other day, maybe every three days. And at this point, it is only kindergarten parents that are being allowed to use Dickinson Street. So they have been very conservative and very cautious with the access to that street. There's a resident that raised a concern that the gate was not being locked in the off hours. So it's only, it's a two-hour window in the morning and a two-hour window in the afternoon. Uh, with the agreement, um, or at least the assurance to the city that the gate would be locked, uh, in between those times. Um, there's, apparently it was, uh, several days where, uh, the maintenance staff just wasn't able to do that, they got busy. Uh, I've asked to, uh, Mr. Beatty to make sure that that does happen. Because if we're going to, uh, allow Atlantis to try to, you know, figure out if this is a potential partial solution to this, um, then it's important that whatever the parameters of that attempt are, are maintained and respected. Because it's a change for the residents of Dickinson Street. From what I understand, it has alleviated some of the traffic on Jefferson Street to some extent. And, um, it, uh, has increased some, uh, parents arriving early, especially in the afternoon, um, on Dickinson Street where there's no parking, so we've asked, uh, police patrols to go by there. Not with a heavy hand, but just to remind people. And so it's a, it's a little bit of a work in progress. And we're just trying to support Atlantis as much as we can, because my sense is that they're, they're looking to try to figure out the best solution to this. And I think that by the time we get to public safety, uh, which, which I'm relieved to hear that the council wants to do, because I think it's a helpful conversation, we'll have more data and we'll have more time to know how this, um, is playing out. Uh, and I think Mr. Beatty would, would probably be glad to speak to the council about his observations, because he's on site every day. Um, and from what I understand, he's actually at one of the entrances every morning and every afternoon to make observations as to whether or not this is making a difference and if it's worth doing.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor seat six, Councilor Prozo.
You know, the other thing is you also have Holy Trinity School and Letherno School down in that area. And when you drive down Jefferson Street, there is a row of cars waiting to go in. One of the suggestions is Atlantis has a lot of land there. Maybe they need to put in a big parking lot so people come in and park on the school grounds and then they just go out one way or another. But, uh, that may be one of the suggestions that probably would cost them to do that. But, you know, uh, interfering with neighborhoods on both sides. And I got calls, um, Friday, I got calls, uh, yesterday from Dickinson Street residents, that people were parked there and the gates still weren't locked. So that was yesterday, so. I told them that I knew it was on the agenda and we would probably refer it, so. But, uh, that is a problem.
It's a tough situation.
We built a lot of big schools and now you've got a lot of cars, because schools aren't neighborhood. And all of the schools around the city, there's a problem with traffic patterns, et cetera. And one by one, we've tried to alleviate it. And now this is the next one on the block to try to figure out a way to, to handle this. With that, I yield, thank you.
I do know that somebody in the administration was stopped, uh, I think yesterday, and thanked for whatever part we had in train. And so it's, I mean, there, there's folks on both sides, they all have very reasonable and understandable, uh, perspectives. And we're just trying to do the best we can.
Councilor seat two, Councilor Dion.
Yeah, um, yeah, it's true, this has been an ongoing issue for years now. But I know it, that the, it's been, um, discussed numerous times at the Maplewood Association Neighborhood Meeting. And it, in the beginning, it was, it got pretty volatile. People are really, uh, passionate about it. So I, I don't know, it might be worth, um, letting the president of that association know that it's gonna go to the safety committee. Uh, because they do have a lot of input, because they've had many discussions, the, Mr. Beatty's been at their meetings and, uh, so that might be helpful. With that, I yield.
We're, we're in, uh, communication with them, uh, pretty constantly and, and they would definitely be a part of whatever we do. And they're in support of doing, trying to do something to alleviate the, the traffic on Jefferson Street. So, um.
I think we're on the right track. I think putting forward the committee on public safety is the beginning and I think, uh, it's on the right track. What comes out of it, we'll yet to see, but I think we're on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion has been made to refer to committee on public safety and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine is a communication from the ARPA director, um, providing a detailed summary of the status of the, uh, Fall River, City of Fall River and Bristol County ARPA funding.
Motion to adopt, place on file.
Motion accept, place on file.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilor Kevi, second by Councilor Prozo, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Out of ten are the recommendations received from the par- um, traffic commission?
Most referred ordinancees.
Most referred ordinancees.
Second.
Legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas hiring and retaining police officers currently is a challenge due to the vil- vilifying of the job. And whereas police departments throughout Massachusetts are facing a shortage of new recruits to fill vacancies. And whereas an increasing number of Fall River police officers are retiring or resigning. And whereas this is causing officers to work overtime many days in a row to fill those vacant positions. Now therefore be it resolved that the committee on finance convened to discuss this matter, which poses a broad public safety concern.
Motion to refer to public sa- uh, committee on finance.
Motion to refer to committee on finance has been made and seconded, on the motion, Councilor seat six, Councilor Prozo, sponsor of the resolution.
The only reason that I, I put this resolution forward was because if we are losing police officers, why are we losing them? Are we losing them because of money? Is it that they want to change career? Is there something else? And if it is because of money, then I think the general public needs to know that. Because sometimes when you want to increase people's salaries, everybody's upset by it and don't think people should be making more money. But we're training these officers, paying for them to be trained. And if they're leaving just because of, uh, the dollar amount, that's something we need to really look at. And I think that to have an exit interview would be a good thing. I don't think an exit interview with human resources from the police department would be appropriate if there's something else. But maybe this is something that Nick, who's our human resource director here, maybe they need to work in conjunction to see why people are leaving. I know of one officer who put in, uh, for a transfer and was denied. Why? Because we don't have enough? I know another officer in Louisiana who's trying to get back to Fall River. That hasn't happened yet. Why? We need people. And, and what can we do to, to keep this? I know that the police have gone through a lot and there are some officers who maybe shouldn't be officers. But we have a lot of really good police officers too. And we don't want to burn them out with the excessive overtime that they get. And I think post was a good thing and a bad thing. I mean, we can't use auxiliary police and this city has all kinds of feasts in the summertime and different activities where you could utilize auxiliary police. Now we can't utilize them, so what is post gonna do to change that? There was a meeting on the seventh, but I, I got in too late, uh, on the Zoom to listen to what they had to say. But I just think it, it, we need to know why they're leaving and the community needs to know why they're leaving. Because if it is about money, then we need to deal with that. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas a meeting of the city council committee on public safety was held on June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two to discuss complaints from residents regarding noise generated at the Fall River Coin-operated car wash located at twelve twenty-five Dwelly Street. And whereas the manager of the car wash agreed to turn off change machines at eight, eight PM to decrease, uh, decrease activities at the car wash in the evening hours and to disconnect the vacuum closest to the residence located at twelve twenty-seven Dwelly Street at ten PM. And whereas excessive noise is still being generated in the evening hours by customers and individuals loitering in the parking lot and playing loud music. And whereas chapter forty-six, section seven of the code of Fall River prohibits all noises that menace the health or interrupt or disturb sleep of residents between the hours of ten PM and seven AM on weekdays and eight AM on Sundays. Now therefore be it resolved that corporation counsel forward a letter to the owner of the car wash, instructing the parking lot be secured in such a manner that no one can access the car wash or parking lot after ten PM daily.
There, motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, on the motion, Councilor seat five, the sponsor of the resolution, Councilor Pelletan.
Thank you. It's been an ongoing thing, uh, with Dwelly and also, uh, Durfee Street and Broadway, there's always a little problem there. But we managed to fix it up and it worked out. But the Dwelly Street is uncooperative. They gave him a second chance and he was supposed to rectify everything. I'm still getting calls. Maybe some of my colleagues are still getting calls and it's time that we straighten this out. We had something go into the ordinance committee. And with all the car washes that we have, uh, some close at eight, reasonable, some close at nine. This guy wants to work all night, he's not there. They do what they want, they play loud music, they congregate, who knows what else they're doing? And he's not cooperating. And I think the whole thing in a nutshell is that we turn around and we pass the ordinance and we got the noise ordinance from ten to seven. That none of the car washes open at that time. That's it. You got all day to wash cars till seven, eight, nine? You're gonna wash cars after ten? No, it's no good. And, and that's a situation I think we should do and, and we can cure this whole problem. So, uh, I'm hoping that we can do something. And, uh, this guy here, he says he's got a couple of years left to go there. He just wanna, you know, rock the boat and that's it. You gotta be nice to the people. I don't know, some of my colleagues got calls, but I get calls all the time. It's time to put this to bed and, uh, that's what I'd like to see. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor seat six, Councilor Prozo.
I just have two questions. One was that it would be resolved that the city council and health, um, that the city council have the attorney send him a letter.
Yep.
But do you also, as you're saying, do you also feel that it should go to the ordinance committee?
It's, uh, we have something in the ordinance committee, uh, pertaining to that.
Is it there now?
Councilor Kadim?
My colleague in seat number one.
We will take care of it immediately.
Okay. It's in, it's in ordinance.
All right.
Is it, is it in there still? Yeah.
Okay. So we're just voting on sending a letter and Councilor Kadim will take care of the ordinance on the other side?
Yeah.
This has been going on for like two years.
Leo asks twice, I'm in trouble, so.
With that, I yield.
There you go, Councilor, Councilor seat five, Councilor Prozo.
Yeah, well, I field the letter right now with, you know, if we can get the corporation counsel to send him a nice letter, like, you know, Merry Christmas. To close the doors down, it'd be nice, you know? Run along, so. Uh, I don't want it to be too hard on him, but wishing Merry Christmas something to close down. That's it. I yield.
We'll send it from the Grinch. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas numerous complaints have been received regarding the property located at two twenty-two Peckham Street. And whereas several junk and inoperable vehicles are stored on this property, allowing rodents to breed and multiply. And whereas trucks that are used to transport seafood are frequently cleaned, leaving seafood debris on the ground that is not removed. And whereas residents adjacent to this property are continuously working to control the rodent population and living with the foul odors from rotting seafood. And whereas citations have been issued by various departments regarding violations of the code of the city of Fall River. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council committee on health and environmental affairs convened to discuss these important public health concerns.
Motion to refer to the committee on health and environmental affairs?
Second.
Motion for the committee on health and environmental affairs, which is what the resolution is doing, has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, I'm sorry, Councilor, do you want to speak on it, Councilor Pelletan, sponsor of the resolution?
Thank you. You know, I hang around a Pickham Street garage, that's right across the street. So I gotta listen to complaints from the neighborhood, which is all right, that's my job. You got an officer there that's been there, uh, for thirty years. And when you had coffee, Sam never had a problem. This guy comes in, he takes over, he's got seven trucks down there. They were washing the trucks with the crabs all over his parking lot. And it smells, it stinks. So the neighbors are complaining, but they haven't corrected the situation. I was told, uh, by Mr. Hathaway that they gave him a couple of citations, they pay it and they go on business as usual. That's no good. The border help went down there, well, what did they do? Didn't close them down, you know? So that's gonna be taken care of. I would like to see an inspector from Boston to come down and check the property out, see what they're doing there. I don't know what they're doing there. Hathaway don't know what they're doing there, because he never went in the building. He comes up, looks around, oh yeah, it looks all right. Trucks have come in and out, well, what are they doing? They're, they're, they're putting fish in there, not putting fish in there. So that's a question that's gonna be answered. And is that company in the right place? I mean, that's the neighborhood, he bought it, all of a sudden he moved all his trucks in there. All of a sudden they're washing, uh, the trucks out, the fish is on the ground, the crabs are on the ground. What's he gonna do? Rodents, smell and everything else. So it's, it's gotta be corrected. And he's got a boat in there, he's, he closes fish company on South Main Street. And all the stuff went up there, you got the bins and everything else. It looks like a junkyard. So, you know, it's, it's something that's gotta be done. But like I said, I'd like to get the, the inspectors from Boston that know about fish and smell and everything else. He had an inspector go up there, uh, just about, you know, once, twice a month. This guy here usually leaves bags of coags on the back, it's eighty degrees outside, they just left them there, thought of put them away. That's why people get sick. But, uh, something should be done, it has to be done. I'd like to see it corrected. I'd like to see the guy come down, if they can't do it in Fall River, the inspectors, then we'll get somebody else. Let the big guys come down from Boston, let them do what they wanna do. Let's really find out what the story is. Let's really find out what's going on. Trucks are in and out, are we doing fish or not fish? That's a little thing. I hope we can get it squared away, I yield, thank you.
I agree with Councilor, there's something fishy going on there.
Yes. Absolutely.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item fourteen is the police chief's report.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries.
Item fifteen is the request for the revocation of storage of inflamables. The tanks have been removed.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a request for a light order on Beard Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt a lighter request has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel.
Second.
Motion for the corporation counsel has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have minutes of the zoning board of appeals.
Motion to accept and place on file. Motion to accept and place on file.
Second.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries.
Item nineteen are responses from the Attorney General's Office to complaints filed by Patrick Higgins for two council meetings. Open meeting law, excuse me, for two open meeting law complaint violations.
Motion to be accepted and placed on file.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty is parax appropriation for the FY twenty-four.
Motion to be accepted and placed on file.
Accept and place on file.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have minutes of the public hearing from November twenty-second.